Good evening and welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, October the 6th. Again, another Zoom meeting or Ring Central. And with that, Dee, let's take roll.
Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Yes.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, unfortunately, Whitman County has now received the confirmation that our first COVID-19 death has occurred. The deceased was a female between the ages of sixty and seventy-nine with underlying health conditions. This announcement came out this afternoon. According to Whitman County Department of Health, they're extending their condolences to the family and friends. They are not releasing any more specific details about it. We have now a total of fourteen hundred and twelve cases in Whitman County. The latest six males between the ages of twenty and thirty-nine, one male between the ages of forty and fifty-nine, one male between the ages of sixty and seventy-nine, and a female over the age of eighty. Two cases are hospitalized at this time. According to Whitman County Department of Health, outbreaks include WSU Greek housing, it's a hundred and seven cases there, WSU dorms with twenty-two cases, long-term care facilities, six facilities with eighteen cases, school, one school with five cases, and other, one facility with three cases. And again, a reminder for everyone, please mask, please social distance. It is a serious event, and we want to make sure that we're doing our best to keep those numbers down. And again, the governor came out this afternoon and relaxed a few more requirements for Phase Two and Phase Three. We're a Phase Three county. We now have directions on the library that just came out this afternoon, also on movie theaters, which I think now they can do fifty percent in Phase Three. And again, socially distance with masks and use all the cautions. Pullman and Moscow are in the midst of a public awareness campaign, two cities, two universities, one community. Those cities with Washington State University and the University of Idaho are working together to fight COVID-19. Everyone's encouraged, show their regional pride. Again, socially distance, mask up, don't touch your face, and you can also go to hashtag at Palouse Unity. The Palouse Regional Transportation Planning Organization wants your input right now to shape recommendations for policy decisions, investments, and anything needed for sidewalks, trails, bike paths, et cetera. The PRTPO has an online public survey and interactive maps for your, for virtual input. That's until November thirtieth. So please go to paloustrails.paloustrtpo.org and backslash survey, and that should help out. Dan Records has some information today on Palouse Pride, so we're going to go to Dan next.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Inland Oasis is one of our local nonprofits that serves the needs of the LGBT community on the Palouse. They're, they're based out of Moscow, but they serve the broader Palouse area, including Pullman. And so normally Palouse Pride events take place in August, the, in a weekend opposite of Lentil Festival. And this year, because of COVID-19, the board decided to move it to October tenth, which is this Saturday, which also happens to be National Coming Out Day. And so there will be several events planned for this weekend, including a virtual drag show, a Pride swag bag giveaway. We've, they've been contacting several local businesses and getting donated gift certificates and other promotional materials to add to a bag. So we're asking community members that want to participate in that to, you know, encouraging people to, to dress up your car in Pride gear and drive by the Joseph Field parking lot in Moscow from twelve to two on Saturday and, and pick up a Pride swag bag and, and participate later in the, in the drag show. We'll also be doing small group tours by appointment only with masks and socially distance of our new space in Moscow, which is going to be opened as a community center and food bank, a resource for the local community, including the food bank, HIV testing, job resources, and an event center to partner with other nonprofits. So there will be a press release later this week, and I encourage everyone who wants to participate to look for information that will be forthcoming.
Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate that. You're also invited right now to a virtual summit on Monday, November ninth at five thirty. Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins, WSU Police Chief and Executive Director of Public Safety, Bill Gardner, will provide information regarding policies, procedures, training, and initiatives already in place at their respective agencies. Attendees will also be invited to participate in breakout sessions. You can register for the Zoom meeting before November second. You can follow the links to Pullman Police Department in the section of Pullman website. And I did it the other day, and it's quite easy just to register, and you get your confirmation right away. Also, that want to point out that this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have issued a proclamation, and basically it says that Alternatives for Violence of the Palouse is committed to ending violence in our community through prevention, education, and has been providing services to those affected by violence for more than thirty-nine years. Whereas the city of Pullman is an important partner with ATVP, envision to create a community that is safe, equitable, and free from oppression that leads to domestic violence. And therefore, I, Glenn Johnson, the mayor of Pullman, hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And again, we want to thank our police chief Gary Jenkins for serving on the Board of Alternatives for Violence in the Palouse. Gary's been on their board for quite some time, and Gary, thank you so much for your service to that board. Very important agency in this community. With that, we're going to go now to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
No move.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, Laura McAlune, our city attorney.
Mayor, your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of September twenty-nine, twenty twenty, and approve them as submitted. Approval of dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered one zero one 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 two through one zero one one six four totaling one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Approval of dispersments from, for accounts payable checks numbered one zero one one six five through one zero one one seven four, wire transfers six forty-one and six forty-four, and direct payroll deposits six three nine six five through six four two five nine totaling eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Approval of dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered one zero one one seven five through one zero one two zero four totaling two thousand, ninety-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Resolution number R dash sixty-seven dash twenty, a resolution accepting a water line easement from Retreat at Pullman LLC, a Delaware, Delaware Limited Liability Company. Resolution number R dash sixty-eight dash twenty, a resolution accepting a water line easement from Port of Whitman County, a municipal corporation of the state of Washington. And resolution number R dash sixty-nine dash twenty, a resolution accepting an emergency access easement from Port of Whitman County, a municipal corporation of the state of Washington.
Any item the council would like to offer discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through seven. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now go to the regular agenda. Item number one is the public hearing on the revenue sources for twenty twenty-one, and we go to Mike Urban.
Thank you. Mayor, good evening, council. I'm going to get my computer in sharing mode. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, and I think I managed to keep it to the eleven most important slides, or at least ten in this one I'm about to show you. Okay, can everybody see the twenty twenty-one general fund revenue sources public hearing slide? Okay, I'm going to apologize every once in a while. I'm going to look up and refer to the slide because it's on a different screen, so I'll be doing part of this as a no-look meeting. And we've done a couple of these together already, so I'll make sure I pause at the end of each slide and make sure that anybody that has any questions to, please let me know. I can see four of you right now, so if you're somebody I can't see, feel free to jump in with your voice, and that'll help alert me to that as well. So as the mayor said, tonight is a presentation as well as a public hearing on the twenty twenty-one revenue sources. And as per RCW, a public hearing is required to be conducted on revenue sources for the coming year's budget, including the consideration of possible increases to property tax revenues. So although the city council has adopted a biennial budget process, the property tax levies are still set on a yearly basis and recorded with the Whitman County assessor on or before November thirtieth of each calendar year. And the budget calendar that city council adopted earlier this year does have the hearing set for November seventeenth to set the property taxes for the coming year as part of that discussion. So tonight will be informational and taking information from the community that wishes to participate tonight through the call-in line. So before I move on to the next slide, is there any questions? All right, here we go. So here you have the assessed value of the city of Pullman going back a full twenty years, and you can see the number keeps going up. From twenty nineteen, which was one point nine two nine billion, did cross the two billion dollar mark in twenty twenty at two, two point zero nine one billion, about a hundred and sixty-one million increase or three point three percent. So whatever the property taxes are set, it's spread across the assessed value, the taxable assessed value for the city of Pullman. So that's why this is an important slide. Any questions on this one? Okay, let's move on to the next one. When you receive your property taxes, it's for twenty twenty, it was fourteen dollars, eight point eight eight four four cents. And actually, that number goes on quite a way. I decided to round right there because it seemed like kind of a nice number. But per a thousand dollars of assessed value, and where that money goes is split into several ways. So the first place we look at right here in Whitman County, the county gets a dollar, point four five seven, dollar forty-five, and a little more for that. That's about nine point eight percent of your property taxes. The next sliver here is the Port of Whitman. They're just under thirty cents or two percent of the property taxes. The state of Washington, a little more than three and a quarter, three two six four seven, twenty-one point nine percent of your property taxes. Our hospital district local gets just less than sixty cents at point five nine three six, which is four percent. The school district here, we're including their bonds and levies, four dollars eighty-two cents and just a little bit more, or thirty-two point four percent. And then this last chunk over here, this is for the city of Pullman, and this does include the metro parks. And that's four dollars, forty-five cents, and just a little north of that, or twenty-nine point nine percent. So when you get that and you're seeing, you know, all the property, where's the property taxes going? There's very defined places, and that's kind of how your tax bill is separated out. And as we work through the property tax port of this for city council, when they do set that amount, this number will change in coming years, as well as if there was any bonds passed and those types of items. So before I move on to the next letter, are there any questions on this? Okay. Sales tax. So the first thing I'm going to do is if you're looking at your one that was part of the original council packet, I've updated the slide because of two reasons. Number one, as you saw from my email yesterday, we did receive our sales tax numbers reported in September for July, and that's represented by the black line right here. But the other part is Microsoft kind of hosed me a little bit, and they put the two thousand and nineteen line in white on a white background, and that was impossible to see. So I cleaned that up for the viewing audience here, but at least the numbers across the bottom certainly continue to play. But as you can see, the black line is twenty twenty, and compared to the previous year, which was green, we've been trending pretty close, a little lower, significant changes in April here. But the July sales tax, as you can see, was up quite significantly, and that was all attributable to one-time sales tax revenue from construction. And, you know, I've said it before, if it's construction that what helps get everybody through this, then, you know, although it's one-time sales tax, it's, it's, it's better than a huge decrease. If we would have taken this particular item out and said, how did the rest of the sales tax come in for the month of July? It was down three point five percent. So it's, it's still trending very close to the previous year, down, of course, and we can see that in our certain retail operations. But the construction did certainly help that quite a bit. So any questions on this slide before I go on to the next one? Okay. Just a second, sorry. You want me to go back?
Yeah, real quick, I don't know if you can tease this out, so it may be a, you know, non-question. Do we know how much of the sales tax, maybe this will come up later, is attributable to marijuana and liquor tax?
Yes, it will come up later.
Oh, wait, oh, wait, yeah.
Sure. And we can, we can certainly, I have the ability to look retailer by retailer because if that's all they're selling, but if the liquor part of it, if it's a bigger part of the sales in a larger organization, like the grocery store, for instance, yeah, teasing that out is going to be really hard. But with the marijuana, you can certainly tell because that's pretty much what they're only selling in there. Okay. Okay. Right. So we're going to look across this. I've broken this into a few slides. We're looking at our revenues and taxes. The first column here, after the identifiers, the two thousand and nineteen actual revenue versus The first column here after the identifiers, the two thousand and nineteen actual revenue versus the twenty-twenty budget in the second column. The third column is the twenty-twenty year-end estimate from the finance department. So kind of where we think numbers will come in. And then a preview of the twenty-twenty-one budget as we've been assembling that. So as we're only talking about revenues tonight, certainly there's an expense component as well, and that'll be presented to the council by the mayor and myself on the twenty-seventh of October. The last two columns is the change in the twenty-twenty year-end estimate versus the twenty-twenty-one budget. So where do we think things are going to come in? Versus what are we budgeting for the future year? So the first column is the change in dollars and the second column is a change in percentage. So the this goes for a couple of slides, so I just want to take a moment to go over that and so that people at home can follow along as well. But a couple of things I just wanted to touch on that are real highlights of this before I get into questions is the real and personal property taxes as well as the EMS tax. You can see up here that the budget versus what the year-end estimate for collections are, we're we're still collecting, okay. We hope we come in very strong at the end of the year as well. We see there's a few people holding back on their tax payments and there is still a few people on payment plans through the county. So we continue to get some of that money filtered out to us. October thirty-first is your next property tax due date, so you do to avoid any penalties or interest, want to get your taxes paid by then. And we hope that the treasurer who does a fantastic job of aggregating and getting us a report, running the residual taxes that are even postmarked at the end of October and getting them run on to that report very quickly for us, so we can see exactly where we stand. So as we're going through the budget process here, there's going to be a lot more information on what our actual collections are. So there's more to come on this, but there's certainly an estimate. I'd already touched on the local retail tax part of it, and as you can see with that extra pop in July, I've revised my year-end estimate to be a lot closer to the budget than I was in the last previous a couple, several previous discussions. So, you know, we still want to be out there supporting our retail and, you know, being safe and keeping our neighbors and families safe, but, you know, supporting our local businesses as well. Natural gas, which has always been a very strong activity for us, as you can see, based on the two thousand and nineteen actual versus the budget and then the year-end estimate, a lot of that has to do with just closed buildings. Sure, temperatures were a little bit warmer, but if you, you know, even when we had the aquatic center shut down, when we did, we we turned the heat down. So we see that systemically going on as well around the city. Touching on all of the utilities, the interfund taxes as well as the private-owned public utilities. That was, our estimates are down about a hundred and twenty-five thousand or five percent versus the budget. A lot of that just has to do with less people being in town and certain other buildings, you know, turning down the thermostat if it's electric heat and then less folks around for garbage. And as you know, telephone continues to go down with the uptick of everybody going to cell phones instead of landlines. And then the last item that I wanted to bring to council's attention is the admissions tax. As you can see with the football season, what it is, the movie theaters going through what they're going through, this is just a really light line item compared to what we are originally budgeting. So overall, this entire category, we have pegged down at just over nine hundred and seven thousand dollars at nine oh seven and twelve and which is about five point five percent is what we expect the end of the year to hit on this. And we certainly hope that things turn around yesterday or tomorrow will work just fine for me as well. And we can continue to support our local businesses and keep the budget of the city flowing on that. So with that, are there any questions on this? I see Al's hand up.
Yeah, I just a quick question on the admissions tax budget number of two seventy-five. In your calculation of that, are you thinking that WSU athletics will be back in the go mode or not?
I do believe it will be back in go mode, but at a reduced rate and knowing a lot of season ticket holders for football, me being one of them, deferred my deposit to next year. So some of those deposits that we received in two thousand and twenty, we won't be receiving again in twenty-one. We'll just be receiving the difference.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. And as that improves, if this improves, I can adjust that number up and we can release some more expenditures that some of our departments have been asked to, you know, hold back on in the first or second quarter and move forward with that. Okay, good question. Anybody else before I change slides? All right. So this next one is tackling our licensing component as well as our intergovernmental revenues. So I'll start at the top on licensing. The item that I really wanted to point out that sticks out for me is the building structures and permits there. Last year, you see that number eight hundred and thirty-five, eighty-six, that big number. And the budget was only three hundred and ninety thousand for twenty-twenty, and I'm still expecting it to come in at three twelve. Some of that has to do with the fact that we were shut down on building for, you know, most of the spring. And as everybody kind of creeps back and recovers from that and they're finishing projects. But in my talks with the building department, even though I'm trying to be fiscally responsible on this three hundred and twelve, there's a chance that that could increase quite a bit if a couple of these builders goes and pulls permits here at the end of the year as they're anticipating for several housing units on the north end. If they don't pull them at the end of this year, they'll certainly probably be pulling them early next year. So it's it's going to be a timing issue. And I wasn't ready to guess on a timing issue right now. Certainly, the weather's going to change. It's going to get colder and that could push them back into the beginning of the year versus if things continue and they got crews ready to go. So it's I'm trying to make this a responsible estimate, but if it came in higher, it would not surprise me to the least, even to the tune of exceeding the original budget. But as we look at this category and its totality right now, prediction is to be down about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or slightly over twenty-eight percent. And, you know, half of that's in franchise fees and the rest is in the buildings for the most part. Now, intergovernmental is where things go a little little interesting on us. And this is where all our grants are coming from. The marijuana taxes, the liquor taxes and profits coming from the state, they're on this part of it as well. So working our way from the top, I just wanted to let council know that I pulled for this report, I pulled out all the pass-through FAA items. Since we're talking about revenue and we're not talking about expenses at the same time, I wanted to really produce an apples-to-apples type discussion. So certainly the revenues that we receive from the FAA on behalf of the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, we're going to pass right on through to them so they can do their work. But for the discussion of a budget, I didn't, I didn't want to include that for review. But you will see the twenty-twenty year-end estimate is very, very big compared to budget, and that's all cares dollars for the most part. So we do expect to be fully reimbursed by the end of the year on all these cares purchases that we're doing. So that certainly makes the end-of-the-year number quite a bit higher than the actual budget. So it's it's good that the federal part of that has stepped up and they're making some of those dollars available to us. I figure there's, we're going to probably spread some of this into a couple of other departments to cover some of the payroll that we've been doing for folks that are in the utilities. We should probably move some of that out there, but that's kind of the small details that I'll get into towards the end of the year. But for the discussion, I wanted to make sure that council was able to see that. And then as far as the rest of the grants go, everything is just on the top four items down a little bit due to sales tax and other related items and some state grants. We get into the bottom three items and we talk about the marijuana tax, the liquor taxes, as well as the share of the liquor profits with the state. The marijuana, I still think it's trending very, very close to what it's done in previous. We certainly thought there was going to be a little bump in twenty-twenty. Not quite seeing that in the reports as of yet. We got some more coming through and we'll keep council briefed on that as those days come in. However, the liquor taxes are they're they're chugging along pretty solidly. I think you've seen all the news reports as to such that the drinking is up everywhere. And with the drinking being up on the taxes, certainly that makes more profits able to share with the communities. So we are predicting higher numbers on those to the point that I think some of those higher numbers will continue and certainly budgeting higher on the taxes. Little more pessimistic on liquor profits because I'm worried that the state's going to hold more back and maybe that's paranoia, but I think it's that fiscally responsible part of budgeting. So if it does come in higher, we can certainly do some more projects with that. So before I go on to the next slide, are there any questions on this one?
So real quick here, Mike, I appreciate you breaking it out like that and less of a question, more of a comment. So, you know, as far as as so locally, from what I've talked to, I've talked to Palouse Recovery, some of the other mental health experts and those that deal with substance use. And while the liquor profits, that's great, you know, I would almost say that marijuana should be going up. But but this is also a concerning thing, I feel, for our community and really statewide, nationwide, because substance use, from what I've been told, is significantly, has significantly increased and they're expecting even more. And our providers are in short supply. So I just wanted to mention that. I I think it's great for the city that we're getting some of these revenues, but it's definitely very, very troubling from the medical side. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Nathan. Very, very good point. Any other comments on this slide before I go to the next one? Okay, let me get back over here. Okay, this is the last pure numbers slide. So we're going to talk about some other items, charges for goods and services, fines and forfeits, miscellaneous revenue, and then wrap it all up here at the bottom. So a couple of things I wanted to highlight, as you can see, one of the big changes in our charges for services of program and activity fees throughout the city for all sorts of departments. We've talked about how things have been shuttered and a general slowdown and other items and, you know, the budget was one point three million dollars for program activity, program fees and activities. And, you know, we're hoping to come in at three hundred thousand this year. So that's a very large portion of what was done at the end here. The next line down, I got bolded because there's going to be a discussion about metro parks here. So all the metro parks items as they come up, I certainly want to point out to the council, who will also serve as the board for the next public hearing for metro parks. So to just touch on this really quick, it's property tax revenue is the, you know, greatest proportion of that. So as the metro parks pulls that in on property taxes with the agreement that they have with the city of Pullman, we perform the activity, we do the the playgrounds, the capital work and any of the programs for metro parks. So that's, the metro parks receives it, they pay the city for the service, we receive it as revenue as well. So ultimately, this charges for services, you can see that the budget versus the year-end estimate is down just north of a million dollars, a million twenty-six thousand, six hundred or just over twenty percent at twenty point eight. And a lot of that lives up here in the program activities and certainly there's some items that are up like ambulance revenue due to strong collection activity from our, from Design West or outside contractor. But some things are down to plan check fees, very similar to the building permits discussion we had on the previous slide. Fines and forfeits is a really, it 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 lives on its own, but it's a smaller item, so I aggregated it for this discussion. As you can see, the actual last year was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars where the budget for this year is fifty-two and I'm thinking that we're going to come in at forty-two. And as we see activities in increase in the city, whether it's parking violations or library fines, what this is where these things show up. So it's it's down tapered down just a little bit. And then miscellaneous revenues capture a lot of different things, but the biggest mover in this is our investment interest. And as you know, the Fed has been slashing rates darn near to zero. So some of those interest payments that we were expecting just haven't, aren't going to be able to materialize. And we think this is an issue going forward for quite some time as the economy tries to rebound. So we are predicting a lower amount for the end of the year. And if you look at the twenty-twenty-one budget, it's even half of that. So a rebound and raise in interest rates certainly will help this, but low interest rates hopefully will spur on some other activities to home, home building and refinancing and things like that. So at the end here, we have our full two thousand and nineteen actual twenty-twenty budget year-end estimate. And as you can see, the estimate for the budget going forward. Overall, the year-end estimate versus the twenty-twenty budget is down seven hundred and four thousand, four hundred and sixty, approximately three percent. It'd be a lot more if it weren't for the cares dollars that we're putting in there. So that skews it just a little bit. But the, we're trying to maintain our COVID-type budget going into twenty-twenty-one, knowing that as things improve, we can start adding more things in. It's it's hard for us to present to you a budget where the ink isn't even dry and then we start asking you for cuts kind of knowing what we already know at this point. But this is going to be a lot deeper discussion too about expenses when we get into the budget discussions as the month goes on and we get into November. But that's my look at revenue for twenty-twenty year-end and comparing it to what's going forward. Are there any questions on this slide? I've got just a few left.
Mike, I I I will address that when we do the metro parks district, but I'd love to talk some stuff, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. Thank you. Right, so as we bring this forward to you at the end of the month, this is kind of a quick snapshot on the twenty-twenty-one general fund budget by percentage. And if you were adding up along as we were going, you get you get a star on your sheet. But you'll look at some of these percentages and everything is very, very similar to what we're doing. A little over seventy percent of the general fund revenue is derived from that first that first piece, the taxes. And when you add the charges for goods and services to that, you're well over ninety percent and two point two where these other items make up the rest. So just on the next slide, I get into the exact numbers, but are there any questions on this one before I flip over to the next one?
Yeah, mayor. Mike, I I know we I I don't want to compare us to other cities all the time, but I know we've had a number of changes recently to, I don't know, put us more in line with what other cities are are doing. And certainly there are a lot of reasons why we're not the same as others. But do you have any, any idea what what most other cities are sitting at in terms of percentage with the taxes, charges for goods and services? I mean, just for context, is this high-low with the breakdown there? Are there areas where we're way higher than other cities?
Certainly, I want to look at some very comparable cities. The percentages tend to be fairly tight. I mean, there's some cities that do a city B and O tax. So that's a different revenue stream, but that's certainly So that's a different revenue stream, but that certainly increases their taxing portion of it because they also have the sales tax and the property tax and a lot of cities across the state um have the admissions tax as well. I was surprised by how many really did. It was, it was, it was quite extensive. Licenses and permits tend to be maybe just a hair higher in other places and that might be due to their fee structure. Charges for goods and services, I know some cities could be a little bit lower because they, they don't have a robust recreation program like we do here in Pullman. So their um charges for services, um, look at some other departments and other things get skewed that way.
Do you have um, would, would, I don't know if this would count as a revenue, but in places where there are, let's just say, impact fees, uh, does that go into um this under a certain category in, in places where that might exist?
Yeah, it certainly would. Uh, cities that are in GMA Growth Management Act counties um have the ability to get those impact fees as part of being a GMA county. Whitman County is not, so being able to collect those impact fees is uh something that I would need some additional advice on because it's, it's kind of outside my normal purview. It's kind of one of those one-off deals that uh I haven't had the experience with. Because there's not that many counties in the state that aren't GMA. I mean, there, there are, but um, but I count, but by um population and assessed value, not so much. So that's, that's something we can look into, but yeah, impact fees would certainly fit in here. And um I would consider those probably charges for goods and services. And I would look at the bars manual to prove that I'm right. And if not, report back where it really should go.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I think I would appreciate just knowing a little more and um, I mean, you might need to uh talk to Laura about that. But I would love to know and, and um, so yeah, if you wanted to take that offline and then um, I don't have a date for a report back, but I know it's something that I've, I felt for a while that maybe we're, we're leaving something on the table and and going out and asking residents to fully bond something that maybe a portion of it could be um assumed by someone else. So so yeah, that I, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think that's important information for you to have talking into going into the budget. So let me see what I can do over the next several days and report back to council via memo if that's okay, or if it runs a little bit later, I'll make it part of my presentation as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You got it. Good question. Are there any more out there before I go to the next slide? Okay, again, the next slide is very related to this site, slide. So instead of talking about percentages, we're actually talking about the dollar amounts here. So um seeing what, you know, 70% means as far as 16,840,000 dollars, 375 versus charges for goods and services, 5 million. And again, that fines and forfeits uh line at 46,164, there is an orange sliver in here. If you get up really close to your monitor, I hope you can see that. I tried to offset those colors uh the best I could for the viewing public and as well as uh our city administrator who is colorblind. Hi, Adam. So um that kind of goes around the horn, very similar to the last part. So balancing this uh budget into 21 as well as into 22, that's something that we've been working very hard on through the department heads, through the mayor, through the city administrator. So we're, we're very close to being able to present a balanced budget to the council, but part of the balancing on that will be using reserves for 21 and 22 while maintaining the uh goal of a recommended uh two-month uh reserve at the end of 22. And uh we're, we're very close to being able to produce that for you. Um, we certainly hope revenues increase so we can um keep some of that capital reserves in case uh there's another spike. Or if we need to do some more projects and um produce more expenditures, uh, there's some things I know the departments would like to continue to do under normal circumstances. Unfortunately, we're just not under normal circumstances right there. And you'll see some of that with the expenses, but the department heads have worked really hard to um identify the um urgent, important, necessary, ordinary items to bring to you as the mayor's recommended budget on October 27th. So I have two more slides. Is there any questions on this one? Okay, there was a very interesting paragraph. Well, I think interesting, there was an important paragraph at the end of the memo as part of the agenda items about the implicit price deflator. So now is the good time to kind of discuss that and how it reflects to property taxes. And you hear, if, when I talk about the implicit price deflator, you hear me slow down. So I'm going to quit calling it that. I'm going to call it the IPD, which is uh the, the term it's generally brought under. And what the IPD is, it's just a different metric for measuring inflation, much like the Consumer Price Index or the CPI, which a lot of people are a lot more familiar with. The state of Washington adopted IPD as part of this um for this particular metric instead of CPI. For reasons I, I, I could read and learn the history, but the IPD is what we're using. So IPD is, comes into effect when we talk about the 1% change in property taxes. So the way that the law is written, the, you could take the lower of 1% or the IPD. And in most years, the IPD is over 1%. So that certainly defaults it down to one very easily without much consideration of the IPD. This year, the IPD for the measuring period did fall below one. So the measuring period, um, it's the IPD of record on September 25th. So that would be the August number because the September number is not released until after the 25th. It's released on the 30th. And it, it stayed very stable, went up, um, the IPD went up just ever so slightly. So when we talk about the 1% property tax, we have to talk about it in two different ways. There's the if council wants to look at the 1% increase, which is the top. Or if they want to look at the IPD and talk about other things like bank capacity and um other activities. So the IPD affects us because we are a city over 10,000 people. And um so we're allowed to do that. And then there's always the new construction, which will be the second part of uh my discussion on this slide. So right now, the IPD, as you see in our um memo was 0.60152, the IPD of record. So it's writing all of that down is very i- it's a challenge to convey that in words. So that's why I knew I'd have a second bite at the apple here to kind of walk council through it. So um for us, the, the difference when you look at it by taking the 1% and um versus the IPD, the IPD, you can take or bank if council believes, and I want to get this wording right, please bear with me. We can adopt a result, council can adopt a resolution or ordinance declaring a substantial need and levy the full 1% if it is documented that the increase in costs of services is actually in excess of the current factor. So what that means is you, you can levy the full 1% with an additional resolution or ordinance and identify that our expenses to the city, whether it's payroll, cost of goods, all the things that we're ordering that haven't gone down in price and in fact are going up. The IPD could be bypassed and we can declare a substantial need. So that's why I present to you both items for your review and consideration. I can tell you that the budget number I used is assuming the 1% because when I started putting things together, the IPD was still unknown and um, but that's what it's based on. And if you can see the in the second column here on the top, the, the city has their regular tax levy for property tax at uh 1%. Then the EMS, there's that additional one to fund that function. And then the Metro Parks, which is the other function of the board of the Metropolitan Parks District has theirs. And if you look at that column versus the difference below the 67,000 versus the 40, the 9,300 versus the 56, and of course, the 5,900 versus the 35. We're talking about uh change to the city of approximately for the two items, city and EMS, uh $30,500. And if you extrapolate this out over the assessed value, it's about one and a half cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. So on a $250,000 home, you're looking at about $3.75 of um going up from the IPD to the full 1%. Uh, the metro, it, you know, the 5,900 versus the 35, that's approximately 2350, little over one tenth of one cent per thousand. So on another $250,000 home, you're looking at about 28 cents. So that's the IPD part of this. And before I get into the new construction, I think this is a really good place for me to pause and take some questions. This is not something that we deal with very often. In fact, the last time we dealt with an IPD um below one was in 2015. And then before that, the IPD actually went negative in 2009. So um it, it happens, it just doesn't happen very often. So with that, I'm going to um ask for questions before I talk about new construction. Brandon?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, thank you, by the way, for explaining this in a way that even I could understand. So you asked, you asked us to um have this for our consideration. Is there, is there some kind of action that you need from, from council uh on this? Could, because it seems like we would, we would need to do something to um allow um for this 1% versus IPD.
If it pleases the council, what I would like to do is to bring back as part of the actual property tax levy in, on November 17th, uh, resolution declaring a substantial need that if uh council at that time does want to take the full 5%, they can vote on that item as well. So we can make sure that we've, you know, crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and I'd be um, I'd work with uh Laura McAlune on making sure we bring that. Um, she has documents similar to this in the past and we can just taper that to this. So if it, if it does please the council, I'd, I'd like to have it available and put it on the agenda as a topic. And if council wants to take action on it, that's when I would ask them to do it. And if they choose not to take action on it, then at least it was there and it was available. And I think as we talk about the budget over the next several weeks and um we talk about substantial need and some of the things that we're doing and not doing, then council can take a look at the difference between the 1% and the IPD and uh maybe come to a conclusion on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nathan? Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Nathan? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Mike. Could you, when you bring that to us, could you also explain um the IPD, the 1% so that we can properly explain it to our constituents as well? Um, you did a great explanation, but repeating that is going to be extremely difficult. For those of us not, not as intelligent as you are, well versed in this, so.
Please, please don't think this is intelligence. This is a repetition of this, but thank you. I, I appreciate the compliment. Yeah, I will continue to make this part of my presentations, part of budget packets, part of memos as we go on. Anytime I have a chance to talk about property taxes, I will make sure I include the language. I've had a few suggestions on the language as well, since um I worked this through with uh my editors here in my office and as well as the city administrator. And so we'll, we'll do some um perking up of that too. So as people start to see it, it, it might become a little bit more second nature, for lack of a better term.
Mayor, this is, this is Laura. I just wanted to make sure council understood that. And I agree, that was a great explanation from Mike. If you do um go with the approval of using um the IPD, it would be a resolution. So the city levy, the EMS levy and the Metro Parks levy. So you would, you would need to make that decision for each form of levy.
This is Anne. I have a question. Would that, um Laura, would that just be or Mike, for this budget cycle, this is something we would decide each, each biennium?
No, each year.
Or each year. Thank you.
So we would bring this to you next year and see how that is. And I have a little further, deeper discussion on the IPD as we go through our budget process. And we could talk about timing and COVID and gross domestic product and all the things that really make me nerd out a little bit. But um for the revenue discussion tonight, I think uh this, this part of the consideration for the IPD and presenting that to council for their consideration and the viewers. So to gain that understanding of why things are the way they are at this time was the goal for tonight.
Thank you.
This is Matt. I just have one quick question, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Pat.
In, in MO, um, Mike, that accompanied this, um, if I read it correctly, the IPD is established on September, is posted on September 25th. And that's for the, that's for the year going forward?
Yeah, for the state of Washington to um, for councils and boards to consider property tax increases, that's the cutoff day that they established by RCW. So groups weren't sitting there going, well, let's hold on for a couple more weeks and see what the IPD does. And so everybody's playing with the same set of rules. So yes.
Okay, so to take that um to the next step, this um IPD that we're looking at here, this 0.60152%, that was from August or this was the IPD that was posted September 25th?
That was the IPD posted at the end of August, on the last day of August. It was the IPD of record on September 25th because the September IPD does not get posted until September 30th.
Okay, so at this point, even though we're into October now, at this point, we don't know what that change might have been if there was any.
I do, I do not have it at my fingertips. It is up, it is up very slightly. I'm going to try to do it out of memory, but I reserve the right to correct myself without uh a thousand lashes, but I think it's 0.64.
Okay, no worries. I just want to make sure that I was reading that correctly.
Sure.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good questions. Anything else on IPD before we talk about something we're a little more familiar with, which is the projected new construction valuation? All right, so the other part of uh the property tax levy where we can talk about increasing that is um taking the 1% or the IPD as well as new construction. And as you can see in the yellow on both, there has been a significant amount of new construction added to the uh city of Pullman tax rolls. This is a preliminary number brought to us by um the county assessor. She's uh was Johnny, Johnny on the spot getting this to me in time for the meeting so I can crunch a few numbers and get it into your packet. But as you can see, the new construction and I would definitely encourage council to um add the new construction as part of a uh forthcoming item. The, it, it does have a significant impact on the city. So 257,153 of that, 209 to the city EMS, 29,119 in the Metro Parks portion, 18,378. So um when the new construction valuation gets um firmed up, I believe that'll happen later this month. Um, I'll get an email from the assessor saying, here's the final, final. And before bringing to you the action on the property taxes on November 17th, I will have that number honed in. But for the discussion tonight, um Robin was very accurate last year. I think she was in, within a dollar or three, um, if, if not exact. So I'm, I'm feeling very good. I'm feeling very good about this number, but let's let's see how it changes or doesn't as we go forward. So with that, before I go on to the. Last slide, are there any questions on this part of the slide? Or one, another go around on IPD? Okey dokey, we're almost there. So. Next steps, we've had the IPD discussion and I'm gonna request that I bring. The three resolutions, two to the city council and one to the Metropolitan Parks Board when we have that official discussion. Talking about substantial need and have the groups consider that and the opportunity to vote on it. Certainly don't need that tonight, because tonight is just a presentation. As well as a public hearing. So I'm not asking for action tonight, but that's certainly something we'll talk about as the days go on. Second one, as I mentioned, will be back in front of the council on November seventeenth. And as on the third bullet, you know, I keep I keep counsel ever since I arrived here monthly, every time we get the sales tax and. I I put that in front of you. So we do have one more sales tax number to consider. When we look at budget for our November. Our October reporting, which would be August activity, so we will have that in early November. And even by the time we adopt the budget in December, if we stay to the calendar that council has adopted. There might even be a chance to see how some of that sales tax comes in, but it all depends on the number from the state. Property tax collection, as I mentioned before, will continue to keep you up to date on that, especially with the second half due coming up and. How that's going to play into our end of the year numbers and what that looks like for reserve carryover. And just a reminder to council and the entire audience that on the fifteenth, which we anticipate to be the last meeting of the year, will certainly bring. All the budget amendments back and clean up the books and have those ready, you know, the CARES Act items and some of the other expenditures that need to come forward. And with that, that's the end of my slides and presentation. Are there any questions on this?
I have no questions. Mike, thank you so much. Like, I I know I joke that. I'm not a budget person or a finance expert, but you make it easy to understand. And. I'm not going to speak for the whole council, but for this one council member. I I understand things a lot better because of the way you explain it. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from council? So this was the public airing of the revenue sources tonight. I will check with IT Morgan. Is there anyone on the line? So I'll open the public hearing at this point. Is there anyone on the line to make a comment about the revenue sources?
There's currently nobody on the line.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we close the public hearing. And at this point, we're going to adjourn the meeting of the Pullman City Council. We're going to convene the meeting of the Metropolitan Park District. And you have that before you. So first of all, we have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes. Of the Metropolitan Park District Special Meeting of June twenty third, twenty twenty, and approve them as submitted. Do I hear a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
Moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? With that, public hearing now on the revenue sources for twenty twenty one for the Metropolitan Park District, going back to Mike Urban.
Thank you. Good evening, board. So before you tonight is a presentation and public hearing on the twenty twenty one revenue sources for the Metropolitan Park District. As per RCW, the public hearing is required to can have this conducted on revenue sources. For the coming year budget, including consideration of possible increases to property tax. Although the Metropolitan Parks District has adopted a biennial budget process, the property tax levies are still set on a yearly basis. And recorded with the Whitman County Assessor on or before November thirtieth of each year. So the Metropolitan Parks District is scheduled to set the twenty twenty one property tax levies on November seventeenth, twenty twenty. So before you tonight is, I'm not going to go through the full presentation. I certainly drew out. Items that we can, I can go back in my slideshow and we can discuss. As far as the revenue parts of that go, I'm I'm going to touch on a few of those things right now. And certainly I will defer to the count or to the board if they would like me to review the implicit price deflator one more time. But it's very, it it applies here as well. So. With the primary revenue for the Metropolitan Parks District is property tax. And we're projecting that for year end to be approximately five hundred and forty five thousand dollars. So just slightly more than seven percent below the adopted budget. Other sources of revenue really are donations to the Metro Parks, and this year we've received five hundred and forty four dollars in donations to date. So as I mentioned before, the property tax collections are are just lagging ever so slightly. And as we. Have additional reporting going into the second payment period, I'm going to brief the board on that and see how these items come in and do that. As I. As I mentioned before, on the implicit price deflator two, I'll see if that, we want to go through that full discussion again, but the difference between. The two amounts, the one percent and the point six zero of. The IPD would amount to two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars approximately. And on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house at just over one tenth of one cent, that's. Twenty eight cents on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. So thank you for bearing through my longer presentation before this, I kept this one short on purpose and. I'd be happy to discuss any of the items that I know Brandon has a thought and. Any items and drill into any more detail that the board would like to discuss.
This is Brandon mentioned he would like to say something during Metro.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it. And I I think, you know, I think a lot of of you might agree that. Our parks is one of those areas that it's really easy to see. What we spend money on and and we're all, I hope positively affected by by the things that happen in our parks. In terms of revenues and things like that, I I know, Mike, from the time you came on, that was one area that I I had mentioned, it's. And residents have mentioned too that there's there's sort of this. Confusion about the Metropolitan Parks District and what what where the money is actually going, how much we bring in, what is being spent on. And you know, how how detailed that ends up being. I would love to see additional revenues, and I'm not sure what options we have on the table for that. But I I know anything that would cost more to our residents, while it may very well be fair. As much as we use the parks, I I think people would want to have a better idea of. Those expenditures and and seeing where those those go. You know, so if it's X number of dollars to Mary's Park, they they could see it. If it's X number of dollars to, you know, pickleball courts, you know, or whatever it is. You know, just just having that be a little bit more transparent. And when I say that, I don't mean that in a negative. We we certainly are. You know, doing the best we can, but I know that's something that we've talked about before, and I just don't know if you have. If you have any insight or updates on on that in terms of getting. Better, easier to understand information on Metropolitan Parks District. Because for me, it's that that meeting we open and then we close it and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, I I'm looking right here are. At the levy for the Metro Parks, I was trying to come up with the. The cents per thousand and I I it's not on the document that I brought, so I apologize for not having. That handy for this discussion, but I'll 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 reiterate that in future meetings, but it. It's it's less than fifty cents per thousand that we're living for property tax. And I I'll be the first to admit, this is the first Metropolitan Parks District. I have worked with. So there's a lot of nuances that I'm picking up. As far as the process goes on it, but as far as increase, doing a lid lift on the levy. There's some discussion that needs to happen on that because it is a junior taxing district and competes with other junior taxing districts for those dollars. That's that's a very detailed conversation that I can certainly put together and have, but I don't feel real comfortable being. Being worthy of the full council at this point with what's rattling around in my head. So I'll 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 put some thoughts together and. Make that part of the revenue discussion too, when we roll out Metro Parks during the full. And then also look at some other options as far as what is allowed for Metro Parks. The only other item that really kind of sticks out. Is we, there's certainly investment interest available, but the way that our Metro Parks is set up. Agreement with the city, it it collects the dollars, it passes through the dollars, there's no dollars really being held. To invest for projects that's being really kind of held at the city level.
I have a little history on the Metropolitan Park District. John Sherman, who was our previous city supervisor, that's before Mark Workman. When Tim Iman came up with one of his initiatives that cut funding for the general fund. We were one of the few cities that started a Metropolitan Park District, so we could actually get some funds to keep our parks going. When everything else was being cut. And as a matter of fact, when I've gone through Association of Washington Cities meetings, we've actually had other cities inquire about. How did you start that Metropolitan Park District? Because they were coming up short as far as general revenue, anything to help the parks. And so it was a creation basically here, one of the first cities in the state. To come up with a Metropolitan Park District just to keep those parks going. When the Iman Initiative cut all kinds of funds to the general fund. And so that's sort of the quick history of it. And so it's just an add on, but it got it got us money to keep the parks going. We've actually had signs out at some parks, this was paid for by your Metropolitan Park District. So we've had signs up at some parks when we've, when we've made major changes like that. So that's a quick, brief look. Anything more, Mike?
Yeah, a question as to form. We've got three categories here. We've got city, we've got EMS. Do we have to assess each of them identically? Could we, I mean, this is just a question of form. I don't know that this would be a good idea. But can we do one percent for like city and then IPD for EMS? And do we have those? Do we have that options? We're not saying it's a good idea. I'm just curious.
Based on Laura's previous presentation, how each one of them have to be adopted separately, I'm going to say yes. Laura, do you care to correct me?
No, I think that's correct. It's a. For each levy and you have three separate levies. Well, the city has two levies. The Metro Park District has one levy.
Well, that's a way to overcomplicate things now, isn't it?
Okay, any other comments or questions? So Mike, that concludes your presentation on Metropolitan Park. I'm gonna again go to IT and Morgan, is there anyone on the public line would like to make a comment? We're gonna open the public hearing on the Metropolitan Park District at this time. Is there anyone on the public line?
There is no one on the public line.
Okay, thank you. Then I will close the public hearing on the Metropolitan Park District. We will adjourn this meeting. Of the Metropolitan Park District. We will reconvene the meeting of the Pullman City Council. And with that, we go to new business. Is there any new business to come before the council tonight?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, hey, I I apologize. This is I, we don't really have a council moments or whatever, so don't be nervous. I'm not dropping anything big. I just wanted to, because we've been talking about parks, give you an update. I I know I mentioned pickleball, but I just wanted to give you an update on those those courts that. You know, a small group of people had had asked for and that we we definitely helped help through the CIP process. Those courts are getting so much use right now that people are having to wait and rotate in on a daily basis. And the the pickleball group that is is looking to form an association right now. They are hosting to the best that they can tournaments underneath the the governor's mandate. So. You know, a tournament with ten people or less kind of thing with social distancing and all all that. It's it has been great to see where where people ask for something that is is definitely today, it's modern, it's. Growing in so many places and we responded and we're getting great use out of it. So I just wanted to give an update to to our staff and and fellow council members. Even though you probably have seen it or already knew that this was a, I think, a major success story of our parks.
And I went through our new rec building in our city hall, our new city hall today. And Kirk Damon said, hey, we had a pickleball tournament on the new courts. So they're getting everywhere, so. Any other new business? Then do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we'll see you next week.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Morgan.